Okay, call me into order with Mandan Public School District. We are in the Mandan City Hall Bosch Frelick Room. Today is Monday, June 24th at four o'clock. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on the agenda, any changes to the agenda? Okay, what's the wishes of the board as far as the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay, I got a motion by Kima, Ms. Hooverstall, seconded by Mr. Hogan. Me.
Yes.
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 Yes. Other communication, anybody in the audience wishing to speak to anything on the agenda? Anybody in the audience? Going once, twice? Okay, moving on. Administrator's report, Dr. Bits.
I'll actually take this one. I want to introduce Andrew Stromy, the city planner with the city of Mandan. We've been working on a brownfield grant application together for the demolition of the current Mandan High School, and I believe Andrew's here to share some information on that process.
Thank you, Ryan, thanks, Mike. I don't have anything to ask, I don't have anything to hand out, I should be able to keep it pretty brief today. Going back a couple of months, probably into the fall, the school board and the city was recommended that the EPA brownfields grant would be a viable resource for both entities to assist in the redevelopment of the Mandan High School site and its current location. The EPA grant cycle typically is due in the fall of the year, so we're looking at a November 1st application for a May award, and then the following year you can begin drawing funds on that grant. So, the grant that we intend to pursue in partnership with the school district would be an EPA cleanup grant. There's a couple of different steps to the process, we're in the assessment phase right now. I know that that's going well, I just reviewed the submission of the Phase 1 assessment to the EPA one day last week. As of now, the investment that the city's made in the project is around $35,000 of our grant fund for the assessment of the Mandan High School site with no local match required. This is a grant that the city procured on its own behalf and is able to offer to the school district in kind. The Phase 1 assessment is pretty much just a visual assessment, and it informs how they're going to do the Phase 2 assessment, which should be taking place in July. That will include the collection of samples, some select soil borings, they'll be swabbing the walls and things like that to figure out a better sense of quantities, which can then be provided to a contractor to do an assessment of potential cost, and then the school district as the client would be provided with the likely cost to do the abatement work. In the state of North Dakota and in the United States in general, the building cannot be altered or cannot be demolished or reused until these materials are taken out. Typically, the lead and the asbestos and things that are worse than that, I guess, would be the things that we need to work together to get rid of before the building can be reused in any way, or the property for that matter. So, that's an update. Again, I don't really need anything from you today, that's just sort of a recap of what we've been working on as a team lately. Some of the next steps that we intend to do will be to get, of course, into the building for the Phase 2 assessment that we hope to do over the course of the summer in tandem with a couple of other sites that we're prioritizing, and then work on that grant application this fall. There might be some future asks of the school board relating to legal agreements, transactions, a lot of documentation regarding how we are able to protect the city's exposure, but also offer this resource to the school district as whichever grantee would need to own the property, and that would be the exposure that the city wants to be kind of careful with just in full transparency. As we kind of offer that, we need to make sure that the level of assistance doesn't put us in a bind, of course, owning a building. So, that's an update, I can take any questions that you have for me. Like I said, I'll be working with Mike and Ryan and anyone else in coming months. Thanks.
Thanks, Andrew. Any questions, anybody? Are these grants fairly competitive then as far as scoring and how they work?
Chair Horn, they are relatively competitive. We intend to work pretty hard on them to make sure that the application that we turn in is as best as it can be. In 2024, there were not any grants awarded to North Dakota, I don't believe any applications were submitted from North Dakota for EPA funding. In 2023, McKenzie County received $500,000 in an assessment grant. Turtle Mountain received about $2 million to deal with what's known locally as Sandhaven in Dunceath, which is being demolished, and in 2023 as well. I believe Cass County Urban Development received $2 million to demolish the 22-story high-rise in downtown Fargo that is no longer there. Prior to that, there've been some grants that have been awarded within North Dakota, however, not a whole lot of them. So, we do see that every year the full granting capacity of Region 8 EPA is being used, and we've been told from our project officer that they're generally pleased with the level of study that's been done, such as the placemaking plan for Mandan High School that detailed some potential feasibility or feasible reuses of that site. So, we think it's going to be fairly competitive again for next year.
Andrew, thanks for talking to us. So, if we don't get that grant, does that change the timeline of demolition and what we're going to do with that site from the city and school perspective? What's the difference between those two things, and how likely is it going to not come in and change the timeline?
School member Peel, I may turn it over to Ryan to let him.
Yeah. I don't think it's really going to change our timeline right now. We're still in the process of moving, obviously, and I think the timeline of this grant, we went no award until February of next year is my understanding. So, we'll be planning demolition at some point after that grant award, no matter what. If we don't get the grant, I don't think it changes our timeline at all. We're still going to need to store stuff in that building throughout the winter, and we'll work on a plan, a demo plan with architects and engineers here, probably starting late this fall.
And I would just add too that there are some other resources that can be pursued, such as the state has a brownfield response program. I think in general, the needs of that property would greatly exceed the total balance of the state resource, probably by double or triple. They receive and allocate a relatively small amount of funding to brownfields and environmental mitigation within North Dakota. However, that's a resource, and there may be some others that can be utilized to help in some way.
If I may, I will just add that time is our friend here, we're not in a hurry. I mean, I don't want that to be a nuisance, the old high school, but time is our friend here. As I've been visiting with people, people keep asking, "What are you doing with the old trophies? What are you doing with..." And I keep telling them, "We're not throwing pictures away, we're not throwing trophies away." I want to get that out. We are moving things up to the high school now in the areas that they've released to us, but they're not releasing everything to us right now. So, it's going to take us... Time is our friend, we will start school in the fall with stuff still in our high school.
Well, thank you, Andrew, thank you for all the work that you guys are, the city and the city are doing with this project, and hopefully we're successful.
Thanks for having me. Bye.
Next up, we got North Dakota Indian Education Summit, July 18th, 19th, State Capitol. Dr. Bits.
If I may, Mr. Horn, I'd like to talk about both of the next two opportunities together. These are two opportunities available to school board members. The North Dakota Indian Education Summit is July 18th and 19th at the State Capitol. Ms. First has already registered for that, and she'll be attending, but if anybody else would like to go, let me know, and I'll get you registered. Then also, North Dakota DPI, the North Dakota School Boards Association partners together, and they are offering a school board member boot camp, and that is August 1st, and that is entirely virtual. So, if you have any interest in attending any of those trainings, events, let me know, and I'll get you registered.
All right, moving on, on the consent agenda. We've got review and consider approval of previous board minutes, May 20th, 2024. Review and consider special board meeting minutes, June 12th, 2024. Review and consider approval of May 2024 board bills. Review and consider approval of May 2024 expenditure report. And review and consider approval of the May 2024 revenue report. What are the wishes?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Kazijad, seconded by Ms. Peel. Any questions? Otherwise, Ms. Remenich, please call roll.
First, yes.
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 Yes. We have nothing on unfinished business, under new business. First up, we've got review and accept results of 2024 school board election.
Yes, included in your packet are school board election results that we do need to take action on tonight. Our rural three-year term, Sheldon Wolf was reelected. For our one-year at-large term, Jake Schmidt was elected. And for our at-large three-year term, Amy Shenendor and Rick Horn were elected. And then, the voters did approve our minutes to be published in the paper for the next two years. I do recommend that we approve this.
Okay, any questions, or it's the wishes of the board?
I'll move to approve.
We got a motion by Ms. Hooverstall, seconded by Mr. Hogan. Any questions? Otherwise, Ms. Remenich, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up, we got review and consider approval of resolution providing for the sale of 21,555,000 General Obligation School Building Bond Series Number 2024.
Yes, included in your packet is the resolution for the sale of bonds. We have been working with PFM, our bond council, to kind of get our timing right on the sale of bonds, and they are recommending that we sell in August, so we need to approve this resolution now so we can get the notice published in the paper. The $21.5 million, just so you know, $15 million of that will be allocated from our building fund, with the remaining 6.5 coming out of our referendum that was passed in '21. This will be the last sale for the new high school in Lakewood Elementary. This is the maximum that we can borrow for those two projects.
How are we sitting overall then with the funding?
We're actually doing pretty good. When we had Ann here a couple of weeks ago, we had talked about maybe waiting a couple of months to sell, and she recommended that we go now. Said, "As you get closer to the general election in November, bond rates turn a little more volatile." And so, she recommended the sale. We're going to need the funds probably October, November anyway, so she wanted to avoid that November election timeline. Rates, we're looking at somewhere between 3.5% and 4%.
And if I may, I don't mean to interrupt, but we're able to invest these dollars and get almost identical to what we're paying, so we're going to be fine. It's not going to cost us anything to borrow this money until we have to start repaying it.
How does that rate compare to the previous?
It's not good, but we sold in a very good environment before. So, our first bond sale, if you remember, was $47.5 million. That was at 1.6%. And then, we were able to take advantage of the school loan construction program for an additional $30 million at 2%. Those rates just aren't, just can't get them anymore, so we've been very, very fortunate. Inflation kind of kicked our butts in the construction side, but we've saved a lot of money on interest.
Any questions for anybody? Otherwise, what are the wishes?
I'd move to approve the resolution. The sale of the bonds.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Peters, seconded by Ms. Peel. Any other questions? Ms. Remenich, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up, we got review providing for participation in the school bond credit enhancement program.
Yes, this resolution would allow us to participate in the credit enhancement program through DPI. What this is, is that if we, as Mandan Public Schools, are unable to make our bond payments, DPI has the ability to withhold funds from our foundation aid payment to make sure that those bonds are paid. It's basically debt assurance. It increases our rating, so hopefully we get a better interest rate. We've participated in the past in all of our bonds. I see no reason to not join the credit enhancement program, it's only a positive for us.
Any questions? What are the wishes?
I move to approve the school bond credit enhancement program participation.
Second.
We got a motion by Ms. Kazijad, seconded by Ms. Hooverstall. Any other questions? Otherwise, Ms. Remenich, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up, review and consider approval of the 2024-25 consolidated application for federal funds.
Yes, if you remember, the consolidated application is how we apply for our use of federal dollars each year, and our biggest one in that pot being our Title I allocation. And for the next school year, we are allocated $1,406,000. It's an increase of about $139,000 for us in title money. Just a reminder, the elementary schools that qualify for Title I are Lakewood, Custer, Mary Stark, and Roosevelt. The change this year is Lewis &amp; Clark no longer qualifies with the movement of some boundaries and opening of Lakewood, but our middle school came back on. So, we continue to have five schools that qualify, there's just a shift there. We will also continue to serve the two private elementary schools, as well as their middle school students within those elementary schools, now that our middle school has qualified as well. Just a reminder that we use these primarily for salary and benefits for Title I staff is the vast majority of the funds. We also do some set-aside funding for homeless liaison and parent involvement, as well as some supplies for equipment and student support. When you look at our district at a glance here, our poverty rate went down slightly, we're at 30.34%, that's down about 0.8%, but that's not a huge shift. Reminder that is off our census data, not off our free and reduced lunch data. And then, when you look into the chart, I apologize, under enrollment, the numbers that are there, those are the number of kids in those schools that qualify for free and reduced lunch, that's not their total enrollment. Our train got stuck coming back from Glacier, and I was, we got home at 6:00 AM this morning, so my brain wasn't totally functioning when I put this together, so I apologize for that, I can get a corrected one for you. But you will also see the poverty rates right next to it. Mary Stark continues to be our highest, followed by Custer, Lakewood, Roosevelt, and the middle school. And you will see the allocations, and then the FTEs next to that that are allocated to them due to that. You'll see, like, Custer, 1.3, we might look at having a staff member help serve at one of our private schools at a Custer, that's where that 0.3 comes in. And so, that's where you see some of those partial ones. And when you look at our private schools, the students that qualify, those are students, like, 16 students from Christ the King live within boundaries of our schools that would qualify for Title I services, so that's where that 16 comes from. So, they might live in Mary Stark, our Custer boundaries, but are going to Christ the King, so that's how we get that data there. And then, if we continue to look at Title II, this is, we're looking at professional development primarily here, also instructional coaches. We're right about where we were last year, we're at $328,000, about a $1,000 increase. We use these to fund instructional coaches at Red Trail, Fort Lincoln, and Lewis &amp; Clark, as well as some district-wide professional development. And then, for Title IV, we did see a bit of a decrease here by almost $11,000. This is when we're looking at school nurses, social worker, those pieces. One of the things I'm working with, our enrollment person, Carrie Power, and our family liaisons, is making sure we're being real tight with identifying students as homeless and identifying our foster care students. It could just be a weird year, you know, that we dropped a bit there, but just making sure that we're identifying those students so that we're receiving the funding that we need to in those areas. And then, finally, as you know, we run look-alike programs in all of our elementary schools. We are really transparent that we want equity for all of our students and opportunities for them. So, we will continue to run look-alike programs at Fort Lincoln, Red Trail, and Lewis &amp; Clark, even though they do not qualify for Title I. We will support an FTE in each of those buildings to run those interventions on identified students. So, that was kind of the quick and dirty of the consolidated application. As you'll remember, this is kind of the first volleying back and forth with DPI that I'll do, I will submit this as our tentative, here's what we want to do with that money, and it'll go back and forth, but this is the initial approval on your part. Any questions?
I guess one question I've got then is with the look-alike programs, why is it with one FTE, why is it a different cost for the three different schools?
Because of the cost of the employee is a little bit different, depending on benefits and those sorts of things.
Any further questions, anyone has? What are the wishes then regarding?
I would move that we approve the 2024-25 consolidated application for the federal funds.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Peters, seconded by Ms. Peel. Any other questions? Otherwise, Ms. Remenich, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up, we got review and consider approval of the revised joint powers agreement with the Mandan Parks. Dr. Bits?
Yeah, we meet, we do a lot of things together with the Park District, share the Starion Sports Complex, the All Seasons Arena, the tennis courts at the middle school, they run after-school programs in our school, we use their golf course and soccer fields. I'm sure I'm missing some, but we just work hand-in-hand with them. We also share in the maintenance of the facilities that we use together. We have a joint powers agree with them, and we meet once a year. We have a couple of school board members, a couple of park board members meet, and we do that usually in January of every year. And if you remember, we approved an agreement in January, well, we, Director Higlin from the Parks and I realized that we made a mistake, and we didn't include, that we extended, we have a no rent, that we don't pay rent back and forth, and that was supposed to end in 2027. When we met in January, we extended that until 2031, and we didn't put that in the agreement. So, we'd like, it's just, the park board approved this the last time they met, earlier in June, I'm asking you to approve it right now. And then, the other change in here is, right now, we share the ASA, and we have an expense-sharing agreement that is in place through the end of August. I think we're going to still be using it this fall for some volleyball practices. We just said we'll cost-share 50/50 from September through January. I don't, look, it doesn't, won't be huge money, we'll still be doing wrestling down here, and it'll give us a little time to clean it all out and everything, so I would ask you to approve this agreement with those changes, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Dr. Bits?
I have a question under the general provisions for Letter A, Ferris Field, football field and track, is that just outdated at this point? Because later in the agreement, you do mention that it's the demolition is happening.
It is, and we probably need, we talked, Cole and I talked, that we probably need to clean that up. Ferris Field, the land that Ferris Field was on was donated to the school district in 1938. The wording of that donation agreement said that it belongs to the school as long as it's still used as ball fields. If it's any other purpose, it needs to go back to the original owner. We didn't even know who the original owner is, we kind of were trying to figure that out. So, we're going to continue to own it, they are currently constructing ball fields down there right now, there are softball fields, I think, and maybe one youth baseball field that is getting constructed down there. We do need to clean up that language, it's in two different areas. But since the Park District approved it in this form, I would ask that we approve it in this form, and next January, we will get it right.
All right, with that, I move to approve the revised joint powers agreement with Mandan Parks.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Kazijad, seconded by Ms. First. Any other questions? Otherwise, Ms. Remenich, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up, we've got review and consider requests to be released from a teaching contract and have liquidated damages waived for Kristi Mock, first grade at Red Trail.
Correct, Ms. Mock is a teacher at Red Trail, and she is, I think it says so in her letter, accepted a position with Western Governors University. It will allow her to be a little more flexible with her family. As you know, that when somebody asks to be released from the liquidated damages or penalty for breaking contract, the chair of our first policy and personnel committee, Mr. Peters, myself, and then a representative from the teachers' union, Chelsea Bitner, we get together and we make a recommendation to the full board, and you can follow it or choose to do your own thing, but the three of us met, and we are recommending that the damages be waived, and we not enforce them, and this type. We believe that's consistent with what we've done with other people.
Any questions on that? What are the wishes then?
I'd move that Ms. Mock be released from her teaching contract and that we waive the liquidated damages.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Peel, seconded by Ms. Kazijad. Ms. Remenich, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up, review and consider approval of new certified contracts. Desiree Schilling, kindergarten at Custer. Kelsey Olson, first grade at Red Trail. I'm guessing she's replacing Ms. Mock.
She is. Mr. Steckler called, and he said, "Do you mind if I get going on this?" And I said, "I don't." So, you're right, Kelsey Olson will replace Kristi Mock, and Desiree Schilling will replace Jessica Albrecht, who you released at a special meeting a couple of weeks ago, I believe. So, it would be our recommendation that you approve these contracts.
So, along that note then, sir, is there anybody else, are we still waiting to try and hire, other than the tradesperson?
That's it.
Only one, okay. Okay, what are the wishes?
I'll move to approve Desiree Schilling and Kelsey Olson, and welcome them to the district.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Hooverstall, seconded by Mr. Peters. Any further questions? Otherwise, Ms. Remenich, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up, review and consider approval of open enrollment application seeking a deadline waiver. Dr. Bits?
In front of you is an open enrollment application. It's a family that was enrolled in Mandan, has left the district, and would like their kids to continue in Mandan, and it would be our recommendation that you approve these applications.
Looks like this is three individual, three children in the family.
Yeah, three children, one family, yes.
What are the wishes?
I move to approve the open enrollment applications.
We got a motion by Ms. Kazijad, seconded by Mr. Peel, or Mr. Hogan, the right name here. My scratching notes there. Any other questions? Otherwise, Ms. Remenich, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up, we got review and consider approval of classified pay rates for 2024-25 school year. Mr. Legassi.
Yes, Dr. Bits, Dr. Rederath and I met with Sheldon Wolf to discuss classified pay raises for the year. We came up with a 5% increase across the board with a minimum of $1 an hour. That minimum will help those lowest-paid employees, which are our paraeducators and child nutrition staff members, to try and boost them a little bit. So, overall, it's a 5.27% wage increase. This is at the top of comfort level on our budget for next year. However, we have been making great strides in our classified wages. I put a little history down there on the bottom, so you can kind of see what we've done over the last five years. I feel like we've finally made a difference. Talking with Tyler Steinwand, our HR director, before the meeting, we had 23% fewer resignations at the end of the school year in classified staff than last year. So, I really feel like the efforts of the school board to increase wages, our administrators working with those folks has really, really helped. So, I would recommend approval of our 5% increase and a minimum of $1 an hour.
For purposes of this one, I am going to abstain from voting. For purposes of this one, I am going to abstain from voting on this one, so. I know that, Ryan, you guys have made great strides in this, and then hopefully we can keep it up too and try and retain individuals that we need to try and retain here too, so. Okay, what are the wishes on the board?
I would move to approve the classified pay rates for 24-25.
Second.
We've got a motion by Mr. Peters, seconded by Ms. Peel. Any questions? Otherwise, Ms. Remanich, please go roll.
Yes.
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 Okay, next up, we've got review and consider approval of assistant superintendent 2024-25 contract. Dr. Bits?
Correct. In your packet, you have a proposed contract for Dr. Retorath. We met, I met with Mr. Wolf, and we went through these, and separately, I met with Mr. Horn, and we went through these. Dr. Retorath certainly overpay, isn't overpaid. There are eight school districts, eight of the top 10 school districts have assistant superintendents. This will rank her eighth of eighth, so she's not overpaid, but I know, well, she's young yet. But she's, she does a great job. We're fortunate to have her. It would be our recommendation that you approve the contract before you.
I move to approve the contract for assistant superintendent for Dr. Carly Retorath, and thank her for her service she's done with us so far.
Okay, we've got a motion by Ms. Kozicad, seconded by Ms. First. Any other questions? Otherwise, Ms. Remanich, please go roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Next up, review and consider approval of the business manager 2024-25 agreement.
Correct. This isn't a contract, this is an agreement. And again, of the 10 largest school district, Mr. Legacy is going to rank eighth. So I mean, he's not high. He's done a fantastic job. He's been the, the lead person on building Lakewood and building the high school. He goes to all the construction meetings and keeps things from me that are just going to worry me. So I appreciate the great job he does. And he's certainly not overpaid, but I would ask you to approve the agreement with him.
Where does this then rank him in the business?
He will be eighth of 10, eighth of 10. So yeah, we've got some work to do there.
I do want to say, we do need, as a board, we need to look at, at his pay. Also too, when we built the middle school, the, the business manager then received a very nice stipend. And anyway, I just, we do need to look at, I feel he deserves more than what the contract is right now, the salary, but.
I would agree with you, Mr. Peters, but we got to make progress here, so, yep.
Is there, can I ask the question?
Go ahead.
What was the amount that was given as the stipend at that time for, during the middle school construction?
I don't know. I wanted to say it was about $20,000, but I could be off, but.
It was before my time. I don't know.
Oh, okay. All right.
And that was the middle school. Mr. Legacy has been the outward person for two new schools.
Yeah. And in that, I guess I would like to ask if we could maybe do some research on that and see if that's something that could come before the board in the future?
I, I can. I will do a little research and see what that amount was.
I'm, I'm going to jump in if you're, sorry. I, I love what I do. I, I am adequately compensated. I look at my peer group. I love coming to work every day, so I feel like I'm fairly compensated, so.
I will move to approve the agreement for Ryan Legacy for business manager 24-25. And again, thank you, and again, I, I hope that maybe, we appreciate that you're grateful for what you're receiving here. But if we've set some precedent in the past, I think that's worthy of, of looking at to see if we can continue something the budget so allows.
I'll second.
Okay, we had a motion by Ms. Kozicad, seconded by Mr. Hooverstall. Any further questions? Otherwise, Ms. Remanich, please go roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up, we've got future meeting dates. July 15th, regular school board, 5:30 City Hall. August 5th, regular school board meeting, 5:30 City Hall. August 19th, regular school board meeting, 5:30 City Hall. After that, we've got the annual board retreat. It's approximately 6:15 at the City Hall. August 26th, Facility and Finance, 5 o'clock, the Brave Center. And Tuesday, September 3rd, regular school board meeting, 7 o'clock, City Hall. Any other meetings we're missing? None? Okay. One thing that's not on the agenda, and I'm just going to kind of go from here. We got a little plaque here for Ms. Kozicad for years of service. The Mandan School District, the school board, the administration, I would like to thank you for years of service. And the plaque isn't, it's nice to have, but your, your years on the board also are greatly appreciated, so.
Yes, I've enjoyed my work with the board tremendously, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Otherwise, this meeting is adjourned.